Britney, all set?
All set.
Okay. You all set with Dalton TV?
All set.
All set, ready to go? Where are my glasses so I can see what I'm doing? Where are my glasses? Oh, those are my glasses?
Long distance, short? No, not in short distance.
Yeah, no, I don't know where my glasses are. That's a problem. Maybe I forgot them. All right, I'll do my best. Good evening. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting into order. And although we don't have a flag on stage, we have looked for one today and could not find one, so visualize a flag in your eyes if you may, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Stroud, will you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. And let's go ahead and go through roll call.
Here.
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 Excellent, thank you.
I'm going to do it this way. Yeah. This is a time for a public address to the board. This is time when the public may address the board on any issue or matter of the town. Please identify yourself by your name, address, or the company, institution you represent. Public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair or the designated may answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda item, please make that request at this time. Anyone? Okay. We are meeting in person and making this meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the general public. We will not be responsible for any technical difficulties, so if you would like to be sure or participate in, please try to attend in person. And with that, I'm checking anybody wishing to address the board on any item. Okay? See you in a minute. Appointment ratifications, Mr. Hutchinson.
Yes, we have three appointments to make. The first is Jennifer Richard as Recording Secretary effective August 30th, 2020.
Have a motion?
Two. And, oh, no. And I am sorry to report that she's not able to be here this evening. I did meet with her and was on her interview committee, and she is the Assistant to the Select Board in Savoy and is looking for extra work, and I think she'll be great.
Excellent, thank you. Have a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Jennifer Richard as Recording Secretary effective August 30th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Here or none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Next one?
We have for your consideration Christine Bielbach as Assistant Accountant effective August 30th, 2022. And I believe Christine may be here with us this evening.
She is?
Yes, hi. If you just want to stand up and say hello and introduce yourself, that would be great.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Yes. I hope I get this right.
Christine, how do you pronounce your last name so we get it right for the record?
Bielbach.
Bielbach, okay.
Okay. I make a motion to appoint Christine Bielbach as Assistant Accountant effective August 30th, 2022.
Second.
Motion second? Any discussion? Here or none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And welcome. And we're here to support you and the team and whatever we can do to help you be successful and learn more about the role and everything about Dalton. So, and welcome to Dalton, by the way. You've been here for three years, is that what you said?
Yes.
Three years? Excellent. Excellent. Well, welcome. Any other questions from the board? All set? Okay, next one?
And I have Patricia Millie Nichols as Assistant Town Clerk, also unable to be here this evening, but she does, she didn't have any, oh, I'm sorry.
You're here.
So, yes, out of Lorridge Field, she was chosen, and we're very pleased to present her for your, her appointment for your ratification.
Excellent.
You want to just introduce yourself?
I'm Patrick Millie Nichols, Assistant Town Clerk, effective September 19th, 2022.
Can I have a motion?
Sure. I make a motion to appoint Patrick Millie Nichols Assistant Town Clerk effective September 19th, 2022.
Motion is second, any discussion? Here or none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Great, welcome. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the high school building update and the new track. So, for the audience and for the board members, the board certainly knows this. I represent Dalton on the seven-town advisory committee, which is an advisory committee to the superintendent and to the school committee. And as a member of the select board and the finance committee from each town, that's on this group. Superintendent Leslie Blake Davis reached out and asked for a meeting to get our opinion on a request for a, to replace the track, a full replacement. And the current, the school building is under budget by $2 million. So what they're requesting is our opinion and feedback on expanding the scope to include a new track. And six out of the seven towns were, attended the seven-town advisory committee. And one of the members from Windsor is actually an official, a state official for track, and he has shared that the condition of the track is that if we don't do something, they will not be able to have track events beginning next year. And when you look at the track, the rubber on top is peeling away and there's cement patches. So when the track teams are running, they run on shoes that have metal spikes on them, and then you could easily slip and fall. So we did, we did basically support that idea of moving forward in that direction, but a couple of things have to happen. One is that the school committee had to take a vote, and they did this last Thursday, not only on voting for the replacement of the track, but also the voting method. And I think as many people in this room will recall, the voting method that was used for the new high school was a popular vote. What they decided was that they're going to use a section of law that's a town-by-town vote, which basically is, it's not the historical four out of seven towns. That method is actually not available per state law and is not, not part of our regional agreement. So they voted, the voting method is a town-by-town voting method, which means any one town, if they don't pass, that means the project would be, the project wouldn't pass. So they're going to work with the select boards of each town, come and present their formal presentations. I shared it with the board. I think we can go ahead and make that public as well. I'll ask CBRSD to post on their website. The cost of this new track is estimated to be $750,000, but what they're going to ask the voters for is an approval of $900,000, just so there's some contingency funds, et cetera. They have also had an engineer company come out and evaluate the track, and that engineer has also confirmed that a full replacement would be required to meet the state standards for, for the track. Reasons why that this was not included in the scope originally is that it was not land that was going to be impacted by the new school. As you see, the new baseball field has been shifted because where the school sits today is on the old baseball field, so that was part of the funding available from MSBA as well. But as they kind of learned more about the condition of the track, how well they controlled the financial, again being $2 million under budget, they said, well, we would like to go forward to the towns and ask for their approval to expand the scope. And so a couple of things occur from a select board perspective. One is that select boards can decide not to bring it to a vote, and if there's no vote, you implicitly approve the project. That's one that a town can do. The second is that you can go to a special town meeting like we are tonight and have a special town meeting vote. And the third, which I don't think is needed, but we're kind of looking at the legal side whether or not we have to actually have a ballot vote, which I don't know if that's the case or not. But the timing is that the school committee passed their vote on Thursday. We will receive a letter, where's our town clerk? She's up there somewhere. There she is. She'll receive a letter on behalf of the select, on behalf of CBRSD School Committee to then notify the select board that a vote will need to, will need to take place within 60 days. So that clock has started since Thursday. But I do, we actually, as a seven-town advisory board, took a tour of the track, and I would welcome any community member to go take a tour of that track as well and, and take a look at it. So that's really that update. So I'll pause and see if there's any questions, and certainly if there's any questions from other members of the press as well, I can take those after the meeting. So, for the board, any questions?
Yeah, did they, did they look at just resurfacing or just?
Yeah, they looked at resurfacing, and the underlying condition is so poor that that resurfacing would not cover the needs of the requirements that they have.
Is that, is my understanding that it's kind of, it's on some of that resurfacing and they had issues?
Yes, that's exactly correct. They did resurface and they had issues after that, pretty, pretty soon after that. One of the things that the seven town, seven towns also learned is the last time the track was resurfaced was 20 years ago. So we require that if we're going to support this, then you have to put a maintenance plan within that to maintain that, to resurface it every five or six years. We also suggested that for that resurfacing process, go on, start doing a fundraising campaign of all the previous track stars and those that use the track to maybe get some fundraising on a revolving process to, to support that maintenance, not resurfacing, because that should be done every five or six years.
Mr. Diver, would a select board vote authorize a vote at a special town meeting, or would we directly authorize the expenditure?
That would be upward discussion and debate which way you would want to go. And I think what I would suggest is that we wait for the formal notice, which should come out very soon, and then for our September meeting, we can take it up then.
Yeah.
And then we can decide which way we'd want to go. Mr. Boyle?
Yes. This is a little rather convoluted issue it's become, Joe. I'm not sure where to start. I mean, start by saying, my son was on the track team in 1991, 92, and it was in bad condition then. I understand it has been resurfaced since then, so it's been resurfaced once in 30 years. Anyway, and that's good. I'm a strong supporter of the track team and McConaughey in general. I supported the expansion, the new building. But the taxpayers in the district, by majority vote, in a district-wide referendum, appropriated a certain amount of money to be used to build a new school, this school you're sitting in right now. It did not have a component for a track, so I questioned the legality of this to start with. Probably have to talk to a lawyer. But what would be much better if we took the $2 million that's left over and applied it proportionally to each town? In Dalton's case, it would be 60% times 2 million, 1 million, 200,000, and returned it to the town. It would be a nice gesture, and it would do away with some of the bitterness that encompassed the last election. And it would be good optics, and it would be clean. And then, at next year's, next spring, and don't forget, next spring is right around the corner, because winter is practically here, and the budget season started, form a capital expenditure item in the Central Berkshire Regional School District's capital budget for whatever the cost is to repair or resurface or rebuild the school, the track. And I've already heard, since this leaked out from last Thursday, several calls already, and some people use some really derogatory language towards the school committee for doing this. They called it a workaround, going around the backs of the taxpayer, sleazy, different things. And there's real problems already on this front with some of the outlying towns. They just don't like the way this has been handled. It's much better to handle it clean. Return the money to the towns, put it on the budget, on the budgetary, for budgetary consideration next spring, let each town vote on it. I'm certain there'll be four towns that would vote for it. I'm certain Dalton would. And it's a much, much better way to do it than this convoluted process that the distinguished chairman has just elaborated. I thank you for your attention. I think you're going to be hearing a lot more about this, particularly the select board and the pros and cons of this in the press. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Boyle.
Anybody has any questions for me?
Yeah, just one, one point, because I think you brought up a very good point about the $2 million being returned. That was actually a point that the seven towns also asked, and what we learned is that the finance part of the building committee actually hasn't gone out for that bond yet, so we actually don't have $2 million to give back because we haven't gone to get that financing yet from the, as the, you know, the school committee. And then when it became a safety issue, that's when we all kind of leaned in a little bit. But Mr. Boyle is correct. It's like there is a lot of, as far as understanding of how this all kind of came together and what does that actually look like. So the way the seven towns landed was looking at the safety issue and looking at the delay for the program as the, as if, if the, you know, you don't want to be in a pigeonhole. You don't want to be, you know, in a, you know, a must-do, but with all the information on the table, I think our community should be aware of this conversation's going and also participate when we do have a public hearing with the superintendent to do the formal presentation, because there are other parts of it. If we, if we don't replace a track, then our students would have to be bused to other areas, so it would be an operational cost. We'll kind of look at, look at the overall picture. But before we learned about the safety issues, the seven towns were leaning towards pause the discussion, celebrate your $2 million under-budget project, right? Because there is some good controls if you're under by $2 million. Then come back. And if we did that, what was that timeline? Then we learned about the delays and the other operational costs and things of that nature, busing students. So, so that's really the, the update. We're not taking a position on this tonight, I would recommend, is that we wait for that notice to come out, and then we'd have a formal presentation. But I would encourage as much participation to learn about this as possible.
Joe, if I could say?
Mr. Boyle?
I'm taking the position, the board is.
Yeah.
Again, to be clear, not against the track we have, it definitely needs it, but the way this is being handled financially, if you follow this procedure, and it goes out to special town meetings in all seven towns, and the town of Washington are another small town, you could get four or five people there at a special town meeting and vote no, then the whole thing is dead in the water. There's a really good chance of that happening. You're much better off waiting until next spring, get the whole committee behind it, get your education out there, and then make it part of the budget process for the Central Berkshire Regional School District, and do it the right way, then nobody can question it. People are already questioning this thing about the ethnicity of it and the legality of it.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with you, Mr. Boyle, and that's, I went to the school committee to advocate for a popular vote, but they landed on a town-by-town vote, and again, Mr. Boyle is absolutely right, any one town could veto the project, if you will. So we'll see how those kind of cards shake out as we kind of move through, but yeah, Mr. Boyle is absolutely correct. Any other questions? And I did open this up for comments from the audience, but I'll pause and see if anybody has a question, and I'd be happy to hang out later for questions as well, on this as well. But anybody have a question? Okay, great. Thank you for that great discussion. Is the board all set on questions? Yep. Great, awesome, thank you. Next item, town manager update. Tom, did you want to go through with that, or you want to postpone? Do you want to table that?
I think it's getting close enough to seven so that, for everybody to make sure they're registered and get people in here, I'll just forego that until the next meeting.
Okay. And then items that anticipated 48 hours before the meeting, there is one that I have, but I'll pause for the select board. Any other items? The one that I have is that on the annual, well, the special town meeting warrant this evening is a request to fund the police officer detail expense line item. Let me just explain this for the audience, is that the process, as I understand it, is that there is a expense line when a police, when we receive a request for a detail, whether it be road work, construction, or something else, that particular company will contact Dalton and say, do you have any detail officers available? And there's a certain rate, and there's a 10% administrative fee on top of that rate for our oversight of administrative tasks. The, what's been, what's been raised in the last, last couple of weeks is that there's been situations over a period of time in which the invoices from those details come in, but the time in between that coming in to reset that fund, there's a delay paying the officers. So what we're asking on the special town meeting in that article is actually put some money in there to pre-fund it so we can pay our officers timely. There are times, it could be a few weeks, it could be three, four weeks, you know, but the process that many other cities use is that if you do a detail, you put on your pay slip and you get paid the next week. So that's what I wanted to bring forward to the board to see if we could have a discussion on this and see if we can set that or whatever the mechanics are in order for that process to work. Mr. Hutchinson?
Joe, I think you just amend the first article.
I, I, Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes, and that was my original impulse, and the motions and explanations forms that people are getting does have that included. What I did not realize at the time was that this is not in the town's operating budget. This is a special revenue fund, so the, the warrant does not contain an article dealing with the town's special revenue funds. It only contains an article dealing with the operating fund. So while I don't think we'll be able to make that part of the motion tonight, I certainly intend to, to bring it forward in the, in the spring and, and rectify. I think there was, there was a case where there was a, over a couple of thousand dollars that were late this last fall, and, and I'm, and I hope that that, that 5,000 I'm proposing will more than cover that. I think between now and then, there's a, there's a, there's very little chance that that will happen. We had a recent case, which is due to staff shortages and, and staff absences, but I think everybody, everybody here is on, on board that we, that we fix that situation. It's just that the way the warrant came out, it's, it's not something I think that we can do actually legally tonight. And I apologize for not having thought of that before the warrant was written, but what was driving the warrant was, was something else, a couple of other items that are the items you see. So I apologize for not having thought of that in advance, but certainly intend to make sure that that gets on whatever the next special or annual town meeting warrant there is.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Four years ago, I brought this forward and it was approved by the select board to increase, I believe the amount was $5,000. At that time, the current, or the previous administration didn't take action and do what they were supposed to do. So I, as Mr. Boyle has said in the past, we've already voted on this. We've voted on this, approved it. We approved $5,000 to go into the account. I'll request that we go back to the original vote, and I'll ask that $5,000, we can re, go back in the springtime and add an additional 5,000, but this has already been voted on. It's not a cost to the taxpayers, it's just moving money from one account to the other. The police officers work at the town, gets 10%, which is like $40 a day for every time they work a detail, is an administrative fee. So it's already been voted on and approved, so I ask that we just go off that previous vote.
I totally agree with Mark. I mean, we should just move to, we did it, we voted on it, it didn't get done, it's, we should just instruct the town manager to do it.
Legally amend the first article.
That, that, that's what I'm saying, I, I don't believe that is possible.
Well, the town, I think, why don't you ask Tony Doyle, sitting right there?
I'll go back to my original. We've already voted on this. It's voted on and been approved.
Can I, can I ask what the, what the vote was?
The vote was add $5,000 to the account for the, for the exact same reason we're going through now.
Yeah, yeah, but, but from, from what, from where to the account?
I have no idea. I have no idea. We have, we voted to approve to transfer $5,000 into that account. Action was never taken, so the vote is already out there and been approved.
Okay, if it's a transfer between accounts, that would have been both the select board and the finance committee, then?
I believe that's what we did. It was, because it was a select board vote.
Oh, well, I certainly look for that and happy to support whatever there's evidence for.
And I also would like it on the future for the spring meeting to add an additional 5,000 onto it. So you're suggesting a $10,000 buffer? 5,000 now that we voted on previously, and then in the springtime, we add another 5,000 in a future meeting. But right now, this will get us up, so give us additional, some breathing room for the accountant, and then 5,000 more in the springtime.
Chief, I see there, is there anything? Again, going back to the open public comment, I'll, I see, and there's a microphone right there.
Could you tell? Oh, thank you. So I thank you on the select board for supporting this. Just to be clear, this is not taxpayer money. The town makes a profit off of our officers that work road jobs. I have a little bit of a handout if you'd like it. Over the last three years, the town has made $25,000 every time our officers, when our officers work details, due to administrative fees and cruisers, when we have to bring a cruiser onto a road job. So this is paid by outside companies, and what happens is our officers work, and then they don't know when they're getting paid. And typically, they get paid in their pay period, but then sometimes they don't. And I have a very young department with a lot of young families, and they're working extra to have extra money. It's school shopping time right now, and they didn't get their detail money last week. I have a lot of upset officers right now, and rightfully so. So we have discussed this proactively to the town to have this taken care of. This was never a town vote ever before. This was a select board transfer from one account to another. And again, it does not cost the taxpayers anything, as it's a revolving account that is supplemented by outside companies that pay the bills.
Thank you.
Would you like copies of these?
Sure.
Happy to give those to you.
What is that that you handed us, Chief?
So these are numbers that we ran today. I'll just give them all to you, pass them out. And it's just the amount of money each year.
The administrative fee?
The administrative fee and the equipment fee, and what the equipment is, is when we use a cruiser on a detail, the town charges extra money for the wear and tear on the vehicle. And those administrative fees, thank you. Sure can. So as you can see, 19 to 20, details started to drop off a little bit due to COVID, but the town was able to bill. And what we do is we take out, we do not bill administratively for school jobs or state jobs. So there, these are just outside paving jobs that are not state jobs. And then 20 to 21, COVID really struck, so you see it diminished by half. And then we had staff shortage. So our shifts come before details, but now we don't have a staff shortage. So the details, and we have paving that starts this week that we didn't anticipate, that is going to be two officers per day, that account's going to be dry in a week. My officers aren't going to get paid for months, and that's the issue.
Okay, so we have mechanics, and going back to Mr. Stroud's comments, do you want to put that in the form of a motion that we go back?
I'll make a motion to go back to my pre, the select board's previous motion where we added $5,000 to the revolving account, so police details.
Motion is second, any further discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, the chairman of the finance committee and our town accountant wanted to say something, and I'm sure it's very important.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you for pointing that out. Yeah. Grab the microphone here somewhere.
Sandra Albano, 609 South Street, town accountant. I just am a little concerned that I heard that there was a select board vote about four or five years ago to transfer money into the outside detail fund, 246. Was that never gone before the taxpayers? It has, it's money, if it was just a departmental transfer, then yes, at the end of the year in May and June, you can make a departmental transfer. I don't know that that was ever made, because I don't have any transfer requests that, I have booked everything that has come before me, transfer requests, so I don't know what that is.
I think, from what I heard, that, that's part of the problem, that there, there was a lapse in administration at that time. Is that correct?
Well, I guess we'll have to find the minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that'll give me the, the answer that I'm looking for.
And I have offered to do that and move that forward when I find the, the correct accounts.
Because otherwise, the transfer would have been made. I mean, we tie those things out every year, so if I, you know, I don't know who's going to look for those.
Yeah, any, any, Mark, any information on, on a tighter timeline? That would be great. Thanks.
So we have a motion and a second?
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discuss, sorry, Bill?
Bill Droussain, the Finance Committee Chair, 878 South Street. First and foremost, it's great that you're making an effort to kind of, how to put it, smoothing, smoothen this thing out. The question I have for all of you is, what account are we going to take it out of? And if it's from the operating budget, any part of the operating budget that will indeed land on the taxes, that's the question, that's the concern here. The money is put into the town's accounts by the taxpayers. This particular detail proposition or whatever it is that we're about to do, this is being put aside with offsetting funds coming in from contractors and thus and such. So you have to come up with an account to take it from. And as for coming before the finance committee, I've been on that finance committee since 1995. And I have to say, I don't recall everything, anything coming before the finance committee in the 26, 27 years that I've been on this committee, on that committee. So you need to get it over to us if you're going to move it over. That's kind of what, how it works in the town of Dalton.
I think that's what we mentioned about the administrative lapse.
That isn't, it doesn't even fall into the administrative lapse. The select board can put it across to the, to the finance committee. It's certainly welcome to do. And it's been done before. But that's not really the point, is you have to, in order for money to go from one place to another and not have it be involved with the taxpayers, it cannot come, as far as I know, as a finance committee chair, for the years that I've been here, the money cannot come from a taxpayer account to a slush fund or whatever you'd like to call it, pick it. I think it's a special revenue account. And I'm not sure what law it is off the top of my head that it, that pertains to these revenue accounts.
Well, I'd like to go ahead and, I'd like to go ahead and amend the motion, do a friendly amendment to the motion to do a couple of things. Take Mr. Stroud's motion, I guess instruction is right, but you guys guide me along the way, is that we go back to our, the decision was made a few years ago about, about fundedness, this line. So the detail officers are paid accordingly, through the pay cycle, if you will, for when they do complete the detail. But also to amend it, to, to steer our town manager and town accountant to get the mechanics in place in which our officers are not waiting weeks to get paid and have that consistently standard practice and have that report back out to us on our first September meeting.
Second the amendment.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. So that's my amended motion. And it was a second by Mr. Boyle. But any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none? Motion carries. So in summary, that basically just directs our town manager and town accountant to get the mechanics done and get that process squared away. So then we have a consistent process moving forward. And we have some pretty big details coming up in the next couple of weeks. We'll make sure that cycle is, is in place.
Joe.
Mr. Boyle.
We need to vote on the main amendment, the main motion. We just voted on the amended motion.
Okay.
The amendment.
So the motion as, the motion as amended.
We can just tell you what the original motion is going on.
We'll just.
If we're seconding.
If we're seconding, we'll just vote.
Okay. So the main motion, there's a motion and a second on the main motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Wait, we have to say no to that when I say yes to the amended motion, right?
No.
Mr. Boyle, go. Ms. Boyle, guide us through this.
Go ahead.
Is it a no or a yes on the?
No.
Okay.
You say we should vote no?
Yep, okay. Let's see, on the, so the vote on the main motion, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
Abstentions? I'm sorry, opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Abstentions? Okay. So the main motion fails. And we did a motion, we did a vote on the, on the amended motion which passed, correct? Okay. All right, remarks to the select board? Hearing none? Moving to announcements. Next meeting is scheduled to take place on Monday, September 12, 2022 at 7:00 PM at the Senior Center with a view, with an option for remote participation. Kevin motion to adjourn the select board meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Great. Good night, Dalton, for the select board. And we're about to start the town, uh, special town meeting. Okay, we're going to take a two-minute break, so.
Other action in relation thereto, Mr. Droussain?
I move that the town amend the vote taken under Article 3 at the annual town meeting of May 2, 2022 by raising an additional $135,874. And 124,724 of the total for Department 434 transfer station expenses. And $6,150 of the total for Department 122, the select board, for appraisal of the Barden property and $5,000 for Department 246, the police detail fund.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to amend that motion.
Okay, and what's, what's that motion, please?
I move that we amend the motion to remove $5,000 for the police detail.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on the motion to amend? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion to amend the article signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed by saying no? Thank you. The motion to amend carries. So now is there any discussion on the Article 1 as amended? Yes, sir?
Very good.
Microphone, please.
I have a question concerning the 125,000 roughly for Department 434. I thought the transfer, of the transfer station from subcontracted activity to town run was going to save us money. How much does this total that budget compared to last year's budget for the transfer station?
Mr. Hutcherson?
We don't have a complete picture of last year's expenses because we did not operate the transfer station. It was done through a private entity. I can speak to.
Do you know how much they paid the private entity?
Yes. We, we don't know what they took in in terms of revenue. And if I can, if I can clarify why this motion is being made, I think that might help. Because the, the operation of the transfer station is within the town's operating budget, the town is by law required to appropriate all of the funds necessary to operate the transfer station. This is the case even though those expenses will be offset by the revenues received from car permits, bag stickers, bulky waste disposal, and any other transfer station revenues at the time we set the tax rate. This means that although we expect to receive about $180,000 from transfer station operations, we can only offset those expenses when we set the tax rate, when they are counted as estimated revenue and serve to reduce the tax rate at that point. The $124,000 requested is the difference between the 119,326 already voted and the total expenses we expect, 243,326, which includes salary, municipal waste services, recycling fees, hazardous waste services, et cetera. In addition, I can report that between the annual town meeting and now, we received a contract proposal just a few days before the start of the new fiscal year in which expenses rose considerably for waste disposal. So I think that we have made a, a very good start to a sustainable operation. Unfortunately, several things were working against us. And I do consider it my error not to have included the full cost of the operating expenses in the annual town meeting budget. But we do have to appropriate the money even if we're getting all this money back. So that said, the, not all of this money is going to be added to the tax rate. In fact, the entire amount we're adding now is very probably not going to be added to the tax rate because we're adding $125,000 and we expect to receive $180,000 in revenues. So we, we don't really know what that's going to be because we don't have the experience of operating the transfer station yet. But that's our best, those are the best estimates we can come up with.
And in, in addition to that, we also added an employee to the town's operating budget, right?
Yes.
I, I don't see where we, I, I, I hope it works out for the town, but I don't see why we're better off than we were. The, the system we just abandoned has been in place for 25 years with little or no problems.
Thank you. Anyone else? In the back?
I just have a quick question.
Please identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Maureen Mitchell, 1099 North Street. I'm in a butter to the Barden property. Could you just clarify for me which parcel that is?
Yes, there are three parcels in the Barden property and all of them are being sold. So, so that, and, and appraising them is, is part of the process of selling them because we have to be able to show that we're not selling it for less than it's appraised for.
And this includes both sides of Route 9?
Yes.
And the part that straddles Windsor and Dalton?
We don't own the parcel that is in Windsor. There are additional legal hurdles to overcome when we sell it. The state and at least one prospective buyer is hoping that whoever buys the Dalton parcels will also buy the Windsor parcel, thus keeping the agricultural preservation restriction.
That was my next question.
Program whole.
The agricultural piece would remain?
I'm sorry?
The, that's, right now, it's under agricultural chapter such and such.
Yeah.
And with a sale, would that remain?
It, it will, it will be sold with that restriction on it.
It will stay.
And, and the buyer will have to demonstrate that they will be working it agriculturally.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, hearing none, seeing none. All those, all those in favor of Article 1 as amended signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed by saying no? Thank you. That passes. As simple majority as all that's required. Article 2, to see if the town will increase the authorization for borrowing for the vote, excuse me, for the vote taken under Article 4 at the special town meeting of June 28, 2021, for renovation and construction in the town hall, including without limitation asbestos abatement and temporary office relocation, and including all costs incidental or related thereto, and including all borrowing costs associated therewith, and further to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow said sum under Chapter 44, Section 7 of the Massachusetts General Laws, or any other enabling authority, and that the select board is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project. And further, that the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Laws, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay each cost or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droussain?
I move that the town increase the authorization for borrowing from $500,000 to $700,427 for the vote taken under Article 4, the special town meeting on June 28, 2021, for renovation and construction in the town hall, including without limitation asbestos abatement and temporary office relocation, and including all costs incidental and related thereto, and including all borrowing costs associated therewith. And further, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow said sum under, under Chapter 44, Section 7 of the Massachusetts General Laws, or any other enabling authority, and that the select board is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project. And further, that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by the vote, by this vote, in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Laws, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs.
Second.
Article 2 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion in the back? Wait for a micro.
Daniel Filio, 36 Chivers Drive.
Mr. Filio, would you wait for the microphone, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Filio, 36 Chivers Drive. I'd like to note that this is, says the special town meeting of June 28, 2021. I believe you were looking for June 27, 2022.
There was one on June 28, 2021 as well.
Yep, I understand. Is that when this vote was taken?
Mr. Hutcherson?
Yes, that was when this vote was taken. And the, the legal language here is, it, it must be reproduced exactly from the original motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hutcherson?
I have some background information and we also have the superintendent of Buildings and Grounds here to answer any questions. Town hall renovations have been considered for several years. A year ago June, town meeting voted to borrow $500,000 for design, renovation, and construction, including asbestos abatement and temporary office relocation. The original plan was to upgrade the third floor to a higher standard of insulation and electrical system with asbestos abatement largely confined to the old projection booth of the Opera House. When assessing the asbestos work, the building and ground superintendent and town manager, myself, found that all of the plaster in the old Opera House contained asbestos at a level which required it to be treated as a hazardous material. In addition, there are areas in the old opera plaster, there are areas in the old Opera House plaster that are not structurally sound. My concern as town manager is the possibility that a section of plaster could give way and fall through the ceiling tiles to the second floor, potentially harming one or more employees and certainly requiring the evacuation of at least one office and potentially the entire second floor. Additional costs would include hazardous waste remediation and the accompanying relocation costs, as well as any health and efficiency costs. When staff reported this to the select board and finance committee with a recommendation to remove the plaster as the most responsible path, they agreed. Otherwise, the town would have to deal with the material at a future date when it would probably be substantially more expensive. The updated plan includes removing the asbestos-containing plaster.
The updated plan includes removing the asbestos-containing plaster not only from the Opera House, but also from two of the offices on the third floor where the plaster is starting to crack. We have received an estimate for the total cost of asbestos abatement for $200,000. The total request to add to the borrowing authorization also accounts for increases in materials and labor over the past-- over the last year and a half, which is largely due to supply chain problems caused by the pandemic. Also, the redesign requires the replacement of a good portion of the current ceiling, which is assumed to be contaminated. That's the ceiling of the second floor. This is why the insulation and electrical work are not included in the current plan, saving that money. So the current plan is now the bare bones of an asbestos abatement project. The cost we are presenting is, we believe, a high enough estimate to cover a reasonable bid. It is entirely possible that the competitive bid process will result in a cost which is lower than the authorization we are requesting. Of course, we hope this is the case, but we need to prepare for the possibility that removing the majority of asbestos-containing material from the third floor of town hall will be as expensive as the estimate. So we ask for your authorization to borrow the maximum amount we believe may be necessary.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any questions for our superintendent? In the back.
Laurie Alessio, Hemlock Hill. I just have a question on the borrowing and repayment of the additional funds that you're talking about here. Is there a bottom line effect on the tax rate, or is it not going to affect the tax rate?
Any additional borrowing we do above the original $500,000 would also have to be paid back--
Right.
--through taxes.
Through taxes.
Yes. We're hoping for a lower amount than we're asking for, but we feel it prudent to cover our estimate.
Okay. The second question that I have, then, is there any leftover, what I'm going to call COVID money, that has been given to municipalities or to the state that has-- that is just sitting there that could be tapped for a project like this?
It is-- it would be possible for us to use some of the stabilization funds that we've been putting money away in, which would then have to be replenished. I believe we have those at reasonable levels. It is-- it's most efficient to add to the borrowing that we have now if-- especially if the cost is slightly lower. This is-- it's more efficient internally to do that. A stabilization vote would be possible, but the town staff recommendation from the financial team was to leave it as an increase in borrowing. In the future, when we have a capital plan that assigns the money that we've raised to all of the projects that we know are necessary, we will certainly have a better balance between borrowing and using stabilization funds. This is not an unexpected-- well, this-- this is unexpected, but it was part of a planned project. And we prefer to use the stabilization funds for unexpected expenses where we need a source of money really quickly, and we like to keep that money for that kind of expense. So for a long-term planned expense, we prefer to use borrowing. And again, both of those would affect the taxpayer, so--
The taxpayer just, you know, is as a senior citizen living in Dalton, and I love-- I've been here a long time. It's getting very, very difficult between the increase with the school tax, our sewer bill just went up, water bill has gone up, and obviously, you're saying that this could-- and to think that the cost would be less than you're projecting is probably naive when all other construction costs are way above. I'm-- that's my concern as a taxpayer and being on a limited income here and trying to keep living here. And you're calling, if I'm understanding correctly, the stabilization fund is the fund that of extra COVID money to help situation? Am I correct in understanding that?
The question, Tom, was the stabilization fund is the COVID ARPA dollars in the stabilization or a separate fund?
No, no, they are a separate fund.
The COVID fund is a separate fund from the stabilization fund. What I'm calling the money that has been given out to various municipalities--
Yes.
--during the COVID pandemic, are those the funds that you're saying are in the stabilization fund, or are those in a separate area?
They're in a separate fund.
Then why can they not be used for-- I'm not opposed to the project in City Hall. I can see the town hall, rather, I can see the need for it, but why are-- is there some way that we can tap some of that money that's sitting there rather than going out and borrowing more and impacting residents' taxes again?
The original decision of the financial team and the select board was to spend the ARPA money mostly on roads and sewers, which need a lot of attention. So in a certain sense, it's robbing Peter to pay Paul. We have-- although we have money to spend, we had originally said we're going to use this for roads and sewers, and we have doled out smaller amounts to other projects, not this much yet. It's a possibility. It would just mean that fewer roads would be paved with that money.
I guess I'm just looking for-- I'm throwing out ideas. Is there some other way that we can help contain the tax increase, if you will?
My name is Amy Turnbull, and I'm living at 60 John Street. I recently moved here from California, and I support-- I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry. Lori. I support Lori in her plea, I guess you could say, to use alternative funds. It amazes me just how high the tax rate is in this town, and I think that it would behoove us to look for an alternate source of funds for this kind of expense. And that's pretty much just how I feel because I just think it's untenue to continue to raise up taxes. Further, I wanted to get clarification on some verbiage in the article that says to take any other action necessary to carry out this project. What does that mean exactly?
Typically, such articles are written very broadly, and that's to incorporate the unexpected. We now have a really narrow project. It's actually narrowed considerably from the original plan. So we will-- this is really now an asbestos containment project, and unfortunately, they're expensive.
So I went online and I looked for the budget. It was a little hard for me to find, but does it show how much we have in the budget? I know that it shows expenditures, but I had some trouble finding how much money Dalton actually has in its coffers.
Mr. Droussin. Hold on.
I mean, is that public knowledge?
Yeah, it is, yes.
It is.
Oh, yeah. Oh, you have it. Yeah, I just had it. It was just handed.
We're going to ask Mr. Droussin, the chairman of the finance committee.
This is March 31st. So there's the property assessment, total budget.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, while we're waiting for Amy. Nice to see you. I can't recall your last name, sorry, but have you had a copy of our annual report? Did you get a copy of that when you moved into town?
No, that's-- yeah, so I'm still learning that I have a curve here, so this may be information that's largely available. I'm just having some trouble tracking it.
Sure, I think they'll give you a summary, but I'll meet with you afterwards. We'll get you a copy of the annual report.
Mr. Droussin, do you have that?
Okay, to answer-- well, I can answer probably several questions, I hope. The town operating budget for the town itself to operate, this year was approved for $8.4 million. That's the town. When you take in account the school district, the total operating budget, including the school district, is 20,000 or 20 million and 20 million, 13,620 bucks. So it's-- as you can tell, the budgets are increasing. I get that. Like, for instance, in this case, we had talked about using our capital stabilization to offset that 200,000, but at the same time, we wanted to make sure there was enough. We didn't want to drain that account, the capital, the stabilization, and that's what I've been kind of up here hunting for, and for whatever reason, it is in this particular document that I have in front of me. But our stabilization accounts, I have what we recently put in them, but I don't have the information that-- as to how much is in each one at this point. But we can-- things over time have gotten better for us with relationship to those, so we'll be changing our focus now to, if we have something like this coming up, we're hoping to be able to look at the stabilization accounts to offset this instead of go to that first before we go borrowing money and raising the tax rate and things of that nature. That's what we're going to attempt to do. The accounts have to be substantial enough to be able to do that. If they're, of course, not substantial enough, well, then, of course, we won't be able to do that. But like, for instance, some of the borrowing, this past year, we had, what was it, $140,000 borrowing? I think it was $140,000 borrowing for capital plans this year, and we took that from the stable-- the capital stabilization account. Instead of going out like we usually do and borrowing money, it ultimately-- ultimately, it kind of lands on the tax rate in kind of a roundabout way in that-- trying to get so that you understand how it works, is that what it does is it may reduce our free cash. And we use our free cash in Dalton to keep our stabilization accounts healthy so that we can do these things and get them done. We've had some rather large capital expenditures in recent years. We've had some, actually, extremely large capital expenditures in recent years. It was a-- we had a previous renovation that had to take place in town hall. We've built a new school. We've done many, many other things in this town through capital expenditures, and it's kind of coming back to tell us today that we need to get these things done. Some of the examples of things that we need to get done are Dalton Division Road and Orchard Street. We just recently found out that it's going to cost us somewhere in the vicinity of $19 million to straighten out the roads in the town of Dalton. Back in '21, '21, I kind of knew that was coming, and people didn't hear.
Thank you for explaining that.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Diver.
I'd like to just thank everybody for comments and the conversation, but a couple of things to share from a select board member's, not the chair, but a select board member's voice, and as we're looking at these different items. We look at the ARPA dollars, and we made a few decisions when that first came out early for some immediate needs at that time, but then made a decision to then put the rest kind of in the bucket of roads and make decisions as we look at the conditions of the roads. And Mr. Droussin just mentioned the $19 million. We heard in our select board meeting two ago, we actually had a study of the roads done and have some really good data on that. But we decided that the best route for the town hall was through the debt financing or financing that project for the total cost that you see in the proposal tonight versus touching the ARPA funds. And if you're interested, I'm certainly not opposed to putting on the next select board meeting agenda a review of the ARPA dollars and how we've kind of made those decisions and what remains in that balance. One of the items that we did decide on those ARPA dollars, very important, you may have seen it, is the Dalton Fire Station, the ladder truck with the city of Boston on it. The ladder truck did malfunction, go out of service. We have a loaner from Boston. You've seen that in the paper a couple of times, especially in the Lanesboro fire just yesterday. So we actually have approved ARPA dollars to go to fund a new ladder truck for the town, a used ladder truck, not a new ladder truck. So please don't Google new ladder trucks and see a million dollars. It's not what we did. It's much, much cheaper than that. But I'd be happy to do that. But that's where the select board kind of put our thoughts is the conditions of the road, it's the number one thing we hear all the time. Number one right next to it is certainly the tax rate. So we're trying to press these balloons, if you will, to try and figure it all out. But the most important thing in this process is your voice and how you think we should spend these dollars and how you think we should make those decisions. We certainly can't make them alone. So again, thank you for your comments, but I thought just adding it from a select board member's perspective, not as a chair, but just as a member, of what we've gone through over the last several months, thinking about these different issues. So thank you for that.
Mr. Hutchison.
Just to tag on to one of the things that he mentioned, that this is debt financing. This will not be paid for all at once. The treasurer will determine the most cost-effective way of paying off the debt and taking into account debt service and things like that. So this is something that would be paid off over a number of years.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All of these projects are good, they're necessary, but we've got to start looking at reality. We're putting money into a town-- into a building that serves the town hall, and when you get all through spending all this money, you still have a building that's not ADA compliant because it has no elevator. I've heard estimates as much as $500,000 to put an elevator in. I don't know where you're going to put it unless it's in the back of the building, which you have-- where you have no parking. So the elderly will still be parking in the street and walking to the back of the building. Makes no sense. We've got to start looking and planning for the future and not just pumping dollars into something that's obsolete. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor of Article Two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Passes needs to be majority. Thank you.
It's a two-thirds.
Oh, it's a two-thirds?
Yes.
All right, we're going to have to count. Thank you. All right, counters? You're right. The vote, you're on, yeah, okay, yes. Okay. So all those in favor of Article Two, please raise your orange cards. All those in favor.
I just listened to them.
All those in favor of Article Two. Okay. Okay, all those opposed-- Okay, all those opposed to Article 2, please hold up your orange cards. Okay, Article 2 passes, just under 70%, 0.69% approved. Article 3, this will also require a two-thirds majority to see if the town will vote, I'm sorry, to see if the town will transfer funds from the general stabilization account to supplement the authorization for borrowing under Article 3 at the special town meeting of June 25, 2018 for the engineering, design, and right-of-way acquisition for the reconstruction of Dalton Division Road or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Drosin.
I move that the town transfer $146,100 from general stabilization account to supplement the authorization for borrowing under Article 3 at the special town meeting of June 25, 2018 for the engineering, design, and right-of-way acquisition for the reconstruction of Dalton Division Road.
Article 3 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Hutchison.
Thank you. Thank you. This project was funded four years ago and never bid, or not until very recently. I did just bid the project and the low bid came in $146,100 more than that, which is not particularly bad considering that four years have passed. This does not involve construction, this is a design project, but I think that's a reasonable fee. I also want to speak, this does take money from general stabilization, so you can see we are moving in that direction in some ways. I'll mention that the reason for this particular kind of transfer is that the original vote for this was a debt exclusion, which requires both a town meeting vote and a ballot vote. And in order to get the project moving expeditiously and to avoid disturbing the town clerk's office in the middle of a busy election season, we elected to go with general stabilization for the funding source for this. We do, of course, intend to replenish the general stabilization fund at the annual town meeting, but you can see that we are starting to move in that direction, so I hope that we can do more of that in the future and, again, have a broader plan for how to fund all of these projects and do it in an orderly way. So I would also ask for your support for this transfer.
Mr. Diver.
I'd like to just to remind the residents and voters here that this project is Dalton Division Road and you probably see in the paper about delays of Dalton Division Road. So there's a percentage of that cost with that overall project by the state, it's going to be funded by the state and I think fed at some level, is $11 million or close there too. So this portion is the town's responsibility to do exactly what Mr. Hutchinson laid out as the engineering and the right-of-way.
This does not include right-of-way funding.
It does not, okay. So the engineering of the projects, which is required to move the Dalton Division reconstruction project moving forward, and as you see in the reports through the local papers and the process, is that we are on the, what's called the tip list for that project in '27, '28. So this starts that process and then the whole reconstruction will happen in '27, '28. But what you'll see next, I think starting next week, highway supers there, Bud, is it next week the grade in for Dalton Division? Wednesday. You'll see a lot of that activity, but that's where we actually applied some of the ARPA dollars was to regrade Dalton Division because we have to do something because it can't sit there until '27, '28 with no maintenance on top of it. So we're moving that ball forward, but again, this funding request is the engineering component directly related to our town responsibility to access all the other dollars through the state program for $11 million to reconstruct that entire Dalton Division Road again in '27, '28. I hope that's clear and makes sense, but I was important to bring the residents to that point.
Mr. Hutchison.
And just to clarify the right-of-way, we won't know how much we have to spend on right-of-way activity until after the engineering is complete. So probably a year from this coming town meeting, we'll have another article asking for funding right-of-way activity. So this isn't the last spending on this project, but the town is required to do that work in order for the state to pick up the $11 million. So all in all, it's a good deal.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Jengris. Hold on, go ahead, yes.
Qualify Dalton Division Road.
Thank you.
In 19, no, 2017, this was brought up and the estimate was $600,000 for engineering, $600,000 to $700,000. Now it's gone up to almost a million. I want to know who was responsible for not getting it done. This was supposed to take five years. This is five years. What happened?
I can answer that one. It's that our prior leadership did not take appropriate action to move that ball forward for whatever reasons and then certainly COVID hit, but there's a lot of that kind of not moving the ball forward at that time.
So incompetence.
I'm sorry?
Incompetence.
I may not go that level, but you certainly can have that opinion. I can't, without getting into more detail and things of that nature, which I don't think is appropriate for open forum, but I can just say that prior leadership administration probably needed to move the ball a little bit forward faster.
So now we've got to wait another five years?
That's right. And the reason being is because we weren't ready with the engineering and the Mass DOT and the Berkshire Regional Planner Board pushed our project off or all the projects that were ready with the engineering.
There were drawings made up and they had special meetings with the drawings?
They were moving the ball forward.
Who paid for that?
For which, sorry?
For the, when they did it the first time.
We didn't, for the engineering, it never happened. Those were just estimates. That's what I'm saying, is that the work of the engineering component never happened on Dalton Division?
Right, not the engineering, but the study was.
Study as far as the need and the cost, sure.
Right, because they had drawings made up in a special meeting, five years ago.
Yeah, and the engineering part of it that Mass DOT and Berkshire Regional Planner require were not completed.
I realize that.
Yep.
Now, what are you going to do? Are you going to be putting in sewer to the, when you got it all dug up? Are you going to finish the sewer lines and water lines?
Let me pause there for a minute. Bud, do you know the answer to that, the sewer? I think, you can grab a microphone and come on up.
There's another one, yep.
Yes, that's something we're going to talk about, the sewer and the water, because that was not in the plans of the project at all. That's something the select board and myself and Tom are going to talk about to see if we're going to move that forward or not. It's so far down, there's a section where there's no sewer and water that I think the town, the people are unseptic and well.
But it's not in the current scope of the
No, it's not.
Berkshire Regional Planner
Correct.
And Mass DOT.
Thank you.
I hope that helps answer your question, sir, and happy to chat afterward as well.
So they're going to look at that?
We're making the ask, if you will, so it's currently not in scope, but.
How are you going to finish the road off now?
Could it mill and pave that road?
Pay it over?
Yes.
The whole?
Yes, yes.
Another waste of money that should have been done five years ago.
Thank you.
Now we paying this again?
Mr. Jengris.
Don't be too harsh on the previous administration. My experience has been that all of these road projects, when we rebuilt Houstonic Street, when we rebuilt South Street, you get to wait on the state's list and you don't dare start engineering too soon ahead of time because by the time you get to putting it out the bid, it isn't worth the paper it's written on. So that's not unusual for there to be a long delay between approving a project like this and being able to go forward based on the state's schedule. My other comment is a general one. This is the second special town meeting since the annual, I hope this kind of money isn't going to be asked for semi-monthly for the rest of the year.
Well, just to set expectations, we will have one more related to the school issue, so we will have one more. But after that, we hope to, exactly.
Who's going to pay for traffic control, the city or is that part of the bid when they do reconstruction?
When they do the entire reconstruction of the road.
Who's paying for traffic control?
That will be the state. The state is responsible for construction. We're responsible for the engineering, which will include the right-of-way work.
Thank you. Mr. Jengris.
Bud, and again, I believe the contractor actually pays for policing that's required for a project and that's including in their contract bid.
Correct, but as part of the $11 million that the state is paying for. Correct, thank you. Anyone else in the back?
Judy Duville, Stockbridge, 14 Stockbridge Avenue. My question is, isn't Dalton Division Road shared by Pittsfield and Dalton?
Mr. Hutchison.
Dalton maintains responsibility for Dalton Division Road and Pittsfield maintains responsibility for Hubbard Avenue. Most of the houses and the road itself is within Pittsfield in Hubbard Avenue and most of the, most of Division Road is in Dalton, so that's an agreement that the two municipalities have come up with.
Yes, Mr. Drosin.
William Drosin, 878 South Street. I'm not speaking as the Finance Committee Chair, it's more of a little bit of knowledge about the layout down there. The layout of Dalton Division Road, as you're heading toward Williams Street, the right-hand edge of the layout is the city or town line, runs right along that line. I've seen this layout, so I kind of have a rough idea of what it is. And the layout on that road is quite substantial, so the right-of-ways and things of that nature may not be as costly as it may seem on the initial look, but it's going to, it's, when that road is done, we won't have to touch it. It'll be like South Street and of course Houstonic Street. The road will be that kind of condition. Actually, I believe it's going to have lanes for bicycles, pedestrians, and even I think some buffer on the edges. So just to kind of give you an idea of what it is and why that road's located where it is. In other words, the houses on the right-hand side, those are all in Pittsfield, all the way down through there. So we actually had a meeting with the mayor of the city of Pittsfield back 2018, I think it is, 2017 or 2018, with concerns, going over the concerns of the citizens of the city of Pittsfield while the construction is taking place. Thank you.
Thank you. In the back.
Alnado again. That's one of my pet peeves, is we're looking at complete streets, which has two travel lanes, two bicycle paths, and sidewalks on both sides. Well, the sidewalks on a Pittsfield side goes nowhere. It connects to nothing. There's no sidewalks on E Street, there's no sidewalks on Williams Street. So my question is, why doesn't Pittsfield pay for that sidewalk?
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. This requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of Article 3 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Thank you, that passes. Mr. Drosin.
Motion adjourned.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Quiet, thank you. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. It's been a pleasure.